President. We have a presentation transitioning to standard-based report cards.
Yes, Jennifer Mupacava had a family issue to deal with that family avoided. And so luckily, we had people from the committee able to step in. We have Sarah Aborn, the principal that was on the committee, and also Deb Cattulus, who was on the committee. Sarah is our principal, Aborn, and Deb Cattulus, the former C I D ex-colleagues, who is now the general assistant director of Dega Department of Council. They will be present.
Everyone?
I like this.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, we're going to walk you through the transition to standard-based report cards for grades three through five. This work represents the collaboration of our report card development team, a dedicated group of teachers, specialists, coaches, administrators, who came together to ensure that the reporting system better reflects the student learning. What are standard-based report cards? Unlike traditional report cards, they rely on letter grades, focus on mastery of specific skills and concepts. Instead of a single grade, they can mass strengths or struggles. Families receive detailed feedback on how students are progressing in each area. This means parents, teachers, and students can all see, have a clearer picture about the learning journey, not just a summary. So why the shift? There are three main reasons. First, alignment. Connect directly to our state and district learning standards. Secondly, clarity. Families receive more precise feedback on student learning. And third is growth. Standard-based report cards encourage a growth mindset, helping students see learning as a journey rather than just a final score. Student, uh, standard-based report cards are built around the standards we teach every single day. It has a direct connection to curriculum, ensuring that what is being assessed aligns with what students are expected to learn at each grade level. Consistent expectations across classrooms. Traditional grading can vary from teacher to teacher, but with standard-based report cards, ensure all students are evaluated based on the same academic criteria. It also supports instructional alignment. It shows student progress towards mastery of the state's standards. Offers clear feedback on student learning. One of the greatest benefits of standard-based report cards is the clarity of feedback that they provide. Uses performance levels instead of percentages. Students are evaluated whether they are exceeding, meeting, progressing, or needing support in mastery of each skill, giving a clearer picture of where they stand. And it also enables targeted intervention. Teachers, students, and caregivers can clearly see which skills need further development, allowing for individualized support. It also facilitates more meaningful caregiver-teacher communication, and caregivers receive specific insights into the student's learning. Lastly, it encourages growth mindset. It shifts focus from grades to progress. Students see their learning as a journey rather than being defined as one grade. Recognizes improvement. Instead of being penalized for each, every struggle, students are encouraged to keep working towards mastery. Promotes perseverance. Since standard-based report cards emphasize learning over time, students are more likely to develop resilience and a willingness to tackle challenges. With student-based report cards, students are assessed based solely on what they have learned. Their grades are not influenced by factors like behavior, effort, or compliance. This shift is especially powerful for our multilingual learners and special education students. It allows consistency in grading across classrooms and schools and eliminates grade penalties for early struggles. Provides clear and actionable feedback and encourages growth mindset. In this way, student-based report cards create a fairer, more transparent system. If we think about the impact on stakeholders for, for, pardon me. For students, first, it encourages deeper learning and understanding. It reduces anxiety over a single test score. And finally, student-based report cards help students take ownership of their progress. Ultimately, student-based, standards-based report cards empower students to see themselves as active participants in their own growth. For teachers, standards-based report cards provide clear insights into student progress. This clarity supports targeted instruction and intervention, ensures that we have grading consistency across classrooms and schools, and provides cohesion across elementary grade levels. In short, standards-based report cards teach, gives teachers a stronger roadmap to guide instruction and make professional collaboration more meaningful. When we think about the impact on families, student-based report cards allow caregivers to better understand their student's learning journey. It encourages meaningful discussions at home, provides an individualized roadmap for caregivers to support their students' learning. This transparency ultimately strengthens caregiver involvement and builds a stronger connection between school and home. To make students feel supported in this transition, we're focusing on several key strategies. First, we're using student-friendly language to explain standards and performance levels. We want students to understand what meeting or progressing really means in terms that they can relate to. Second, we're celebrating growth and progress, not just the final outcomes. And finally, we're encouraging students, we're encouraging student-led conferences. For teachers, we're putting multiple supports in place to make this transition successful. We're providing professional development on how to assess standards consistently and how to communicate student progress effectively to families. We're equipping teachers with communication tools, including scripts, talking points, and templates for conferences so that they can feel prepared and confident when speaking with caregivers. And we're ensuring ongoing support through P L C time, where teachers can share their experiences with the student-based report cards, share their challenges, and align practices. And finally, for families, our goal is to make the new system as clear and transparent as possible. We'll share sample report cards, provide family guides, whether they're one-to-one handouts or with F A Qs, and of course, provide, use multiple communication channels to share updates via parent-squared social media platforms and newsletters. So in closing, the proposed timeline is here, as you can see, pending the school committee approval and vote. We've laid out a timeline for this transition. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions? Member Dugan?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I agree, I think moving to transition-based report cards is definitely the way to go. My only concern would be the timeline a little bit. So it looks like October 5th, that's when we'll be updating the report cards. Are teachers aware of what the type of data they should be collecting right now? Or, because just, you know, speaking from example, you know, I'm doing a ton of testing right now in my classroom, baseline stuff. And if the district were to give me a report card on October 5th of things that I haven't assessed or wasn't aware I needed to assess, that could be a bit of an issue, so.
I think when developing the report card, looking at the curriculum maps to make sure that there's alignment, and then, you know, using the standards based on the assessments that you have already assessed, that they'll have that data. And that's why, you know, letting them know quickly will be more beneficial.
So they're all aware of, you know?
They know, they're aware K two, it's already in progress. So they, they know it's on the horizon. You know, there's been talk of it, so I think they're just actually waiting, waiting for it.
Thank you.
Just a little added clarity of that it's on the horizon, the actual change in the report card.
I can't hear. You come to the mic, I can't hear you.
Good evening. Just for a little added clarity, what's on the horizon is the change in the report card. However, from day one, teachers have been teaching from the standards. So there is no change in content of what's assessed. It's just a matter of what's changing on the report card itself.
Awesome, thank you.
Member Satterwhite?
So I have a couple of questions. The first one is, can you tell me, like, what this rollout is going to look like? I know that it takes two to three years of professional learning and calibration for the districts to implement standard-based grading with fidelity. And I do see, like, the developmental team inside of the PowerPoint, but not like an implementation team. So I'm just wondering what that will look like, and if training's already scheduled.
The implementation team would include some people from that committee as well, but also leveraging, we transitioned already to K through two. So we have that capacity, added capacity, that we didn't necessarily have in elementary when we added K two, because that was our first time. So teachers in the building are familiar with it. We have the capacity to collaborate between teachers at grade levels, to support the transition and implementation, and learning from what necessarily didn't work well in the last rollout as well as we roll out the second cycle for grades three through five. And so basically, using K two as a blueprint for the work that's already happening and improved on what we learned from that last rollout.
And are there shared rubrics or exemplars? How will the district prevent the system from being arbitrary or inequitable across the schools?
When you say arbitrary or inequitable, could you be more specific as like a specific example so that I can make sure that I'm targeting what you're looking for?
So like, if one grade could depend on, if a, if a grade, if a, one grade could depend on who their teacher is versus what they actually learned?
And reflecting on the presentation and what the research says, that that is one of the intentions of moving away from traditional grading systems of A, B, C. And I think that Deb pointed that out as well. And thinking about that I'm not necessarily just assessing on behavior or participation, but whether the student actually mastered the standard itself. And so that it's clear, more clear to the student as to what it means when I get a mastery or a partial master as opposed to a C or a B. What does it mean when I get a B or a C? And so that there is more clear understanding among all stakeholders, the parent, the teacher, and the student. And so actually, the standard-based report card is more equitable and making sure that people have access to the information that they need for parents and better supporting their kids, students, and understanding how they can improve better specifically on what it is, not just math itself, but also for the teachers to drive improved instruction as well.
And what will the communication look like so that families can interpret and like, understand this? And will it be in like, multiple languages? And is there also like, a feedback loop too that will exist?
Absolutely. So if you recall, last year, we shifted away from school messaging to parent square. And one of the reasons for parent squares is that it allows that two-way communication. So school messaging allowed us to communicate with the families in the multiple languages, but it didn't necessarily allow the families to communicate back with us. And so our tool that we did adopt last year, and is in full implementation this year, if I spoke Spanish as a parent, and Sarah is my principal, Sarah communicates in English, but it goes to the parent in Spanish. The Spanish, the parent replies in Spanish, but it goes back to Sarah in English. So there isn't that need for like, the translation back and forth or waiting period. So parents can respond directly to the message to the teacher and/or school leader. And it will be in the multiple languages, just for clarity.
And then just lastly, I think, so my primary concern, as I've already expressed, is, is the timeline. Just like Member Dugan stated, I feel like this should have been implemented on September 3rd, to be fair. Standard-based grading requires consistent judgments of mastery. And so I think without preparation, and the first year is going to essentially be untrained teachers producing uncalibrated grades. It's kind of like, what's the value of the data? Is it going to be valid?
So keeping in mind, even as I think about this week, we trained 150 teachers in science on the Open S I A curriculum. And so it's not anything that they haven't been already trained on. Again, it's just explicit that this is what we're using to measure student progress and communicate to the students and families. So teachers have been trained on how to use standards, but it's applying it in the way of the report card. There've been several trainings over the years as well, and like, unpacking standards and the work that we already do.
Member Gaitley?
So first of all, I don't see a report card in front of me. I like to see what I'm approving. I think the whole, I think Desi would like me to look at what I'm going to approve. So I just don't understand why that's not in front of us.
What they will require is us to remove all the data from the system at this time to provide an actual copy of what the three through five report cards look like. But I am more than happy, and I did share with Member Satterwhite, a copy of what the K through two report cards look like, so that you have an idea of what they look like. They would look very similar. We would also have to go through the process of the translations. And we did not want to embark on that. In the event that it is not approved, then we would have to go back on the tight timeline and go back and change it again, if we did all of that before the school committee approval.
It seemed to work for K two. When was this done? When, when was this written? Because I thought it was done in April. And why didn't we get it till today?
So the development of the work did happen in the spring. But again, the formatting has to happen in the system. It's not a formatting that happens like in a Word document that I can share with you, because if I shared it with you in a Word document or Excel document, it's not going to look exactly like it would in Power School in the system. And there are a lot of iterations that go back and forth, at least 20, before you will actually get what the report card looks like. Just for like, even the formatting of alignment, like from left to right, are these lines aligned up? So there's so many iterations. If I shared it with you after a first round, it wouldn't be how parents look like, how parents and students will receive it.
I don't know. So if this doesn't go through, I'm not going to take responsibility of the school committee not approving this. I think the timeline was off. I think it should have been here, day one, September 3rd. We should have known about it. It should have been here, and it's late. So that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Member Dugan?
I'm good, thank you. No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions?
So I'll make a motion to move elementary math, or sorry, the standards-based report cards, grades three to five, to the full committee.
Second?
Move it to the full committee? What was this motion?
Oh, to move it to the full committee?
Move it to the full committee, yeah.
And then we all vote on it, right?
Okay.
Right?
Then we can all vote on it?
Is that right, Jared? Then we can all voted, vote on it? Okay.
See, I do, yeah.
Second?
Yep.
Member Satterwhite?
No.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
No. No, it won't go forward.
So the motion failed? Yep, okay.
Thank you for your time. We have to pass that.
A policy is a word.
All right, so I would like to call to order the policy subcommittee meeting for September 25th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Okay, so tonight, we have two policies that we're looking to put to the committee. The first is policy J L C D. That's about administering medicines to students within public schools and the procedure for the, excuse me, administration of medication. It would replace policy J L C D. So tonight, to kind of walk us through that, we have Deb Tanser and Jackie Westrin. So if you guys need to come to the mic. Thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you for having us.
Mass D P H updated the Regulation 105 C M R 210 on July 4th, 2025. That is the administration of medications in public and non-public schools. And you should have received this in the packet prior to the meeting. And in that packet, there was a one-pager that highlighted what the changes were. I wanted to highlight two areas. One is a clear definition of regular school activities, which does include all activities that are organized or sanctioned by the school. The second big change is the ability for school nurses to delegate and train unlicensed school staff in additional emergency rescue medications. Currently, we are restricted to epinephrine auto-injectors. But now, we will be able to delegate and train staff in other emergency rescue medications such as epinephrine, which comes in a nasal form, as well as Narcan. And there's other medications for seizures that also come in nasal form. We have updated the policy J L C D to reflect the changes in the regulation. And we also developed procedures to go along with that that are in line with the regulation. And we also had compliance check it to make sure we were correct.
And you were. Great.
And that is all we have, and we would like your approval to move forward.
Questions from the committee? Yeah, Member Castellanos?
Well, thank you for the, for the packet. And it was just very helpful. The information that you shared was very, actually, I appreciate the work, the compliance. Everyone that put this together was very clearly laid out. It was very easy to, to understand what we were trying to accomplish here. And I, and I do appreciate the work. Thank you.
Okay, do we need a motion? Is a motion? I'm not on policy.
I'll make, I'm going to make a motion to move it to the full committee.
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Reed? I'm sorry. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
All right. So thank you very much for your hard work on this, and I appreciate everything you did. All right. Next, we have policy J L, which concerns student welfare. And we have Dr. Kalella and Lauren Walsh here to present for that one. Welcome, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Subcommittee Chairperson Dugan, Subcommittee Member Satterwhite, Superintendent Alvarez, and members of the administration, Mayor Nicholson, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the school committee as a whole. You should have before you, in your packets, a draft amended policy J L on student welfare. Has a little highlight on it. Through the process of the DESI application to garner approval for teams as a public day school, the Director of the Teams Program, Leann Palmer, found an area of growth for the L P S policy manual. A component within the application asks for information on the procedure for reporting suspected student abuse or neglect for students over the age of 18 to the Disabled Persons Protection Commission. Our current policy manual does not speak to reports to D P P C for our over 18 students, only having a provision for minor students with respect to filing 51A reports with D C F. There is not currently a policy with regard to our over 18 students, but the requirement does already exist in the regulation. As we have multiple in-district programs that service these young adults, it's prudent to ensure alignment with DESI expectations in our policy. We reviewed policies for many neighboring and like districts. We did not actually find any model policies, likely because many of these districts use out-of-district placements versus having the programs within their city themselves. As a result, we decided that it would probably be best to mirror the existing policy language for filing a 51A. And so we want to memorialize the expectation that these D P P C filings are happening for students over the age of 18 with the D P P C.
Okay. Great. Any questions from the committee? All right. Seeing none, I guess we'd need a motion to put this forward.
Motion to move this forward to the full committee?
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
All right, so that's that. All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you for giving Charlie the night off. That was nice of you. Appreciate it, yeah, right? All right. Motion to adjourn. I don't know if I can, as the chair, I don't think I can. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Second, roll call, please.
Sorry.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
I didn't get it properly, you know? Is there a proper way to do it? I see the judges hitting hard. I like to get it good, yeah. Really good.
All right. Yeah, right? Or an eye exam, so it's, I gotta, then I feel old and just a whole bunch of stuff.
Is there a printer here?
Excuse me?
Is there a printer here?
Is there a printer? Well, upstairs. What do you need?
Do we have it?
Yeah, it's in your packets.
Oh, I got you, man. That's mine.
I wish I recorded that.
We're going to open the open-mic session, which is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the public schools district and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Anyone wishing to speak at open-mic? Anyone for open-mic? Last call for open-mic. And we will close the open-mic portion of the evening and enter into the 14th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed, absent. Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. And I also would like to welcome back our student representative from classical Amelia Stank. For those of you who are able, please rise for a flutter flag or remain standing for a moment of silence.
United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, good, free, and justiceful.
Moment of silence in memory of Edward Tonner, retired teacher and coach, passed away August 28th, 2025. Michael Newton, custodian, September 11th, 2025. Thank you. Time is the minutes.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to accept the policy subcommittee on September 11th, 2025, the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee on September 11th, 2025, and the 13th regular meeting on September 11th, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Nice habit. Any votes taken in the Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting?
That's your question.
So, the, I think, the vote was to not advance the proposal, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any votes taken in the Policy Sub?
Yeah, we had two. So, the first was to approve policy JLCD administering medicines, excuse me, administering medicines to students within Lynn Public Schools and also the procedure for administration of medications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right. And the second one was policy JL, an updated version of that, which is all concerning student welfare. Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed absent. Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next, we have presentations on facilities.
So, good evening, everyone. We are very proud to introduce four new exciting additions to the Lynn Public Schools community. Each one was designed to meet the evolving needs of our students and families. These spaces reflect our commitment to innovation, equity, and access to high-quality education at every single stage of our students' journeys. Tonight, we're gonna visit these four schools. The Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, expanding college and career pathways for our high school students, which is also home to our Fresh Start program, as well as our therapeutic program. Bennett Street Early Childhood Center, which we refer to as ECC, which is laying a strong foundation through early childhood education and continues to grow daily. CASA, the City Arts and Science Academy, supporting students with alternate and flexible pathways to success. The Virginia Barton Education Center at Briar Cliff. Your safe, compassionate, and enriching environment has been created to meet the unique strengths, needs, and experiences of our students there. These new schools required a monumental amount of work. We are grateful for all the efforts of our ISD Department and Capital Projects Team for their focused time, attention, and talents to make these spaces come to fruition. I also want to thank the Building and Grounds Subcommittee, led by Member Gailey, for their support to this, to these projects, and also to the mayor and the entire school committee for their commitment to making these projects become a reality. Finally, I want to thank and recognize Dr. Alvarez's leadership, vision, and dedication to delivering schools where all students have access to rigorous, standards-based curriculum programming. Our goal tonight for this reporto is to show the current status of these spaces from a facilities lens via video. So, let's take a closer look.
All right. Good morning, school committee and everyone out there in Lynn. Welcome to CASA's day number 15. So, we're here on the second floor, right outside of our main classroom area. And we're gonna go check out some classrooms. And we have a couple of math and science rooms over here. So, come follow me. Let's go check out some CASA stuff. Come this way. Let's go check out a sixth-grade math class. So, we're gonna head up to the third floor. We'll take you through Makerspace that has no classes right now. But we're gonna cut through the Makerspace, and then we'll go check out one of our ninth-grade classrooms. Come on. A few notes about the Makerspace. Right now, we run a few classes out of here. We run design and modeling, and we run an intro to Makerspace. The Makerspace will grow as CASA grows. We have plans to add a laser cutter, a couple 3D printers, and then hand tools like electric drills and hand saws that will allow students to get into making.
... and will be most relevant to your project. As you can see, you use CT skills in pretty much anything you do. Computer science.
All right. So, here we are outside of our new dance studio. Our teacher is here with some students. She's just getting ready to get into doing some dancing movement and is previewing what they're getting into. Come on and check out this new space. This is a dance-as-movement course that is a requirement for all ninth graders. As we grow, every ninth grader would need to take this course in order to be able to take higher-level, genre-specific dancing. So, this is an option for students to just get a feel for what dance could be. And then, as CASA grows, we have plans to add more studio space like this with a recording studio, a black box near. And we do plan to grow into offering ensemble performance. This is what we call Exhibition Day. Students have been working on projects. The theme was, how do we fit into CASA? And students were able to explore the space. They were able to come up with some different project ideas, and they worked on them for the last four Wednesdays. And this was a full-school presentation. Some highlights were building a greenhouse, or students called it to a bathroom glamour, where they were looking at ways to redesign bathrooms. And everybody had to present their options for students. And then, just wanna talk about the application process. Applications open November 1st, and the lottery will start at the end of January. And we plan to get around to visit the eighth graders and elementary schools in that window.
Welcome. My name is LeAnn Palmer, and I'm the Director of the TEAMS Program. The TEAMS Program is located at 112 Kernwood Drive. Our new space is at the Virginia Barton Educational Center at Briar Cliff. TEAMS stands for Together Educating and Advancing Multi-disabled Students. TEAMS is a special education program offered to students ranging in age from 3 to 22. This year, we have six classrooms and approximately 27 students.
Math class, do you wanna say? We would love to. Yeah, let's keep him back. He was just about to activate. Ready? Can you tell us, make this happen?
The program provides highly specialized, individualized support to each student in order to maximize their developmental potential. Our staff include many professionals, such as teachers, hair professionals, nurses, certified nursing assistants, speech and language therapists, board-certified behavior analysts, registered behavior technicians, physical therapists, occupational therapists, vision teachers, teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, and an orientation and mobility specialist. Thank you so much for visiting our school today.
Oh, hi. Welcome to Frederick Douglass. Let's take a look around our new building.
Come on in.
The Frederick Douglass Collegiate students all take college classes and high school classes. The freshmen and sophomores take their professor classes on Mondays and Fridays. The juniors are taking college classes Tuesdays and Thursdays. And our seniors are able to experience a full college course taking form. The collegiate students are enrolled in the Little Arts Transfer Program at North Shore Community College. The therapeutic program contains students in grades 6 through 12. We partner with RAR Arts and the Robin Music in order to support the needs of our students. Our Fresh Start program serves students who are 18 to 22. Make sure you say hi if you see them. One of the best things about our new building is our brand-new kitchen with our great kitchen staff. Students are really excited at Frederick Douglass to have a nice hot lunch.
Hey, thanks for coming by. We're so happy to see you. Come back later.
Hello. Welcome to the Early Childhood Center. My name is Jefflyn Gallo. I'm the Director of the Larnery and the Lynn Public Schools. And I'm really excited to share this space with you today. This year, we just expanded our preschool program from eight classrooms to 16. Let's come take a look. This is one of our integrated classrooms, which is one of the program models we offer here, along with dual-language, small-group learning, and inclusion. Throughout the day, students engage in specials such as art, music, technology, writing, and early literacy, and physical education. We are lucky to have two co-op students from the LPTI Early Childhood Program who are in their second year. And at the Early Childhood Center, we are not just a preschool. We're also the home for our Lynn Public Schools Early Childhood, Community, and Family Engagement and Partnership Programs. If you are interested in learning more about the Early Childhood Center or the Early Childhood Programs in Lynn Public Schools, please visit our Early Childhood page on the Lynn Public School website.
So, I am happy to take comments and questions. But before we do that, I want to thank Shannon Dancefield for her creative genius on this video, and Jorge Santiago for his technical support on this project. And I would be really remiss if I didn't thank the principals, Principal Norken, Palma, Gallo, and Fabiano, for their time to acquaint us with their new schools. Thank you.
Questions? Great. Well, I just want to say thank you so much for the video and echo that to all the people that are involved in creating it, the principals and the technical team. I know we have a team from Capital Projects Unit here this evening as well who's available for questions. And I want to thank Mike Donovan and Brendan and the incredible work that's happened over the last year or so. I mean, the, there's been a lot of work for a while with all the buildings, but the amount of work, particularly over the last six months, is, I think, amazing. And they have done a great job in a complicated environment. It's, it's hard to do anything in government. And that's particularly true now. There's a lot of demands on, and everybody for us as public servants. And for us as a district to have accomplished essentially opening four new schools is really incredible. So, thank you so much to the team for that.
Thank you.
I've had the chance to visit the sites, but I haven't seen all of them in action yet the way I just saw in that video with students. And, you know, I knew the buildings were looking good. But to see the, the learning and the joy in the kids' eyes and the love that the staff, the educators clearly have for them, as you can see in the way they decorate those spaces, from the, you know, little beds for the kids in the earlier grades to the labs and the, and the technology and the secondary spaces. It's amazing. And I, and I'm just so excited and grateful for everyone who has given so much of themselves and their expertise and their passion to do that, from the, the team I just mentioned to all our teachers and educators and parents and students who are, are the ones that really make us see why we do all this. So, thank you for that. Any other questions on the facilities?
No, I just wanted to thank Mike Donovan and Brendan, who are with us. And thank you for coming this evening to show support and also answer any questions. But being that there are none, I've said this multiple times. We could not have, the other day, Mike said, "The vision is yours, and we make it happen." And that's exactly the way it happened. So, I'm very grateful for all of the work that's been put in and all the behind-the-scenes and constant, right, contact and interactions with the entire team. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. I also want to mention the, the city finance team who's helped us fund all these projects and the council, who has allowed for some of these investments to happen. And of course, my colleagues here. We have, I think, really made tremendous strides for the district in opening these buildings. And I did want to say that a week from yesterday, so Wednesday, October 1st, is the event for this building, the ribbon-cutting for this building on October 1st. And then, in November, we will do the official ribbon-cutting for the Virginia Barton Center at Briar Cliff, which will be very exciting. And I think Patricia Barton's gonna participate in that. And we're really excited about it. So, those are public events, and we hope everyone can make it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Pre-K enrollment and attendance trends?
Good evening, again. Uh, thank you to the mayor, Dr. Alvarez, and me, and my colleagues. This evening, I'll be presenting on LPS pre-K enrollment generally. And just a quick glance at our attendance trends today. So, this is pre-K enrollment over the years for Lynn Public Schools. So, this is pre-K enrollment over the years for Lynn Public Schools for the past five years from 2021, which also includes our current enrollment for 2026. As you can see, we've had tremendous growth from 2021. We've almost partially doubled our number of pre-K seats in the district. And so, going from one hundred and eighty pre-K seats in 2021 to four hundred and seventy-seven in 2026, with significant growth between 2024 and 2026. And so, when we think about pre-K and the services we offer, we also want to think about our surrounding community as well. So, how does our pre-K enrollment over the past five years compare geographically to bordering districts? So, these might not be districts that look like us, but they do border us geographically as we think about the movement between our communities and our families. And so, you see Lynn here on the far left, and that includes Saugus, Salem, Swampscaw, Kivety, and Revere. And so, what this does, it allows you to look at our growth over time compared to the other cities, but just generally the number of seats that we offer in comparison to the cities that surround us geographically. This slide is slightly different, in that it focuses on how does Lynn Public Schools pre-K seats in the past five years compare to like districts? When I say like districts, districts that serve students that look more like our students. And so, we looked at Chelsea, Lowell, Lawrence Ball, River, and St. Louis. And it does look slightly different here, but we do offer comparable seats, and in some cases, higher number of pre-K seats than some of the districts that look like us. So, what this tells us basically is, the higher the ratio, the higher access that our families have to pre-K. And so, this slide particularly really looks at, based on the number of pre-K seats compared to the actual number of students that we enroll in pre-K. And one, what this tells us is our families have greater access to pre-K than they did five or six years ago. It also tells us as well that generally, we're closing the gap between what students have access to, as well as we think about the years when they start to count, when we start thinking down the line about accountability and impact, and all those things that we know count for us outside of the district, outside of just generally serving our students well. And so, the higher number of pre-K seats we offer, the more likely we are to close a gap in achievement. Overall enrollment generally. So, I'm going to present two numbers to you tonight. And if you're looking at the slides, these slides are slightly different. The slides that you have are based on last week, but we have two hundred and fifteen. A week ahead of time, so this is based as of yesterday. What is enrollment looks like, so the numbers are going to look slightly different for you. So, overall enrollment, what you see here is a fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. This number is what we are funded based on. This number does not include outside placement. It does not include CPPI. And so, in an event that you do see some different numbers that are kind of slightly different, that might explain the difference why. And so, on the next slide, this does include those groups that I just explained, outside placement, DYS, CPPI. And so, you'll see there is some variation in the numbers there. Enrollment by grade, and so, the lighter color blue, that may not be so visible here, the lighter color shows our enrollment last year by grade, and the darker color, blue or green, shows what our enrollment is this year by grade. And you'll notice specifically at certain grade levels that there are some decreases. And I'm just going to call out one, where you see tenth grade, last year, it was much higher than it is this year at twelve oh seven. Enrollment by demographic education group. And so, all of our groups are pretty much similar, except we do see a small decrease, a starting small decrease for our English language learners in the number of students that are enrolled in our schools as of yesterday. Enrollment by school, again, the same color coding. The lighter color blue or green represents last year. The darker color blue or green represents this year. And so, you can see where our larger schools are, but you can also see that there is a decrease in enrollment for some of our larger schools. And so, I'm just going to zone in on two of them. Classical and English are two largest high schools. If you're wondering what, you're probably wondering like, why did it decline? What's happening with that enrollment? But before I get there, grab out this slide. This is our enrollment by month for the past three years. The line at the top represents twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and the gray line represents twenty-three, twenty-four. And you'll only see one dot because this is by month for that dark green, because we're only in September. But what you'll notice about these trends is that our enrollment increases throughout the year. And yet, what we submit for debt, the funding on, is by October one. And so, those changes happen throughout the year. You can also look at the student enrollment in year-over-year change by grade level as well. This specifically just shows you where the ups and downs are specifically. And so, again, I'm just going to point out the number of four in tenth grade. You see that in twenty twenty-three, we had fifteen hundred and four in the tenth grade, twenty-four, twenty-five, fourteen oh eight. This current school year, we have twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-four students. That's a fourteen percent decline. And so, what's happening, where are those students going? So, this is specifically Lynn English High School. Why are students leaving? Why do we see that decline? In red, you'll notice the two largest reasons. The first one is forty-four percent, about forty-four percent of our students are transferring transferring out of Massachusetts Public Schools. The second highest reason for Lynn English is that they're transferring out of state. And so, there is some variation with Lynn Classical. You'll see that the second highest reason, which is very close to transferring out of Massachusetts Public Schools, is that they are transferring within LPS. So, that might be a student that went to the lottery at LPTI, who are also enrolled at one of our new high school colleges. Attendance. So, in the dark blue, we have attendance presented. And in the orange, we have our chronic absenteeism. From left to right, you start with twenty-two, twenty-three. And on the far right, you have the current school year. And as you can see, there's been some slight variation in orange of chronic absenteeism. But we are at our lowest point that we've had been so far in the last three years. And attendance is similar, but slightly higher than it has been in the last four years as well.
Questions?
Just, there were other slides in the packet, just so you know. So, I don't know if you want...
Are there additional slides?
Okay.
Do you have additional questions about additional slides?
No, just, I think the pub, well, because usually, now the public doesn't see what we see here. And I think that's something that we should probably pop up, no? To go through the full slide? In the packet, it doesn't, we have other, the other slides. And the numbers that we were, I was looking at was LPS year three trend? I don't know if... That's the slide I was looking at, it wasn't matching up to when you were talking. Sorry.
Because, one, these numbers are updated as of today.
Oh, okay.
And then also, it matters as well, remember as well, if we're looking at one number versus the number of others. So, your slides that you have are outdated, or my slides are from as of yesterday. So, that's where you want to see some variation as well. So, I don't mind unhiding the slides for short and sharing them.
We can post this too, on the...
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
All the presentations are posted.
Yeah, just a quick clarity. So, your first ones where we were comparing to the other districts. So, Lynn went up to twenty twenty-six, but the others stopped at twenty twenty-five.
Because we don't have that information, that's not...
Okay, so that's not out there?
Thinking about, we just got out, like, our numbers are changing every day. And so, when I look at the other districts, that's public information. Their public information is not exclusive.
Okay.
That's why we don't do twenty twenty-six for the other districts.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, thank you. Could you just provide some, I guess, like some rationale or just threshold based on the attendance data? Like, you know, you shared the data points, you shared it, but like, what does that mean? Are we in a positive trend? Like, I understand chronic absenteeism is a very, very, very important issue. I know, Julie, your attendance office is working very hard. The month of September is a very critical point for our students. We lose a lot of students. There are a lot of at-risk, vulnerable kids who don't come back to school. And we work very hard this month to get these kids back into the classrooms, getting engaged with the school system. I know, like, you threw a lot of data at us, but how, can you provide some context in layman's terms for the public to provide us some, I guess, results? Because I think the team works really hard. Not to say this data is not effective in how you deliver it to us, but I think there's way more that needs to be talked about, that's not being talked about.
The context, if you look at the data, just over the years, the blue bars go up over time with representative attendance. And while it's very similar, you do see a slight increase, whereas as you think about the effort, that the enrollment team, that the welcome team, that the schools, from the family engagement specials, that they, all the work that's been happening, even the way that we communicate with families, with our two-way communication system, that they feel more welcome perhaps as well. That, in addition to some other things, are possibly why you see that slightly upward tick in improved attendance for this last, like, where we are right now. And for chronic absenteeism, again, thinking about those strategies, using targeted data with Open Architects, some of the systems that we didn't previously have. I think our families, our schools, were able to look at data differently and really target specific groups around who is it that's not coming to school in a much more efficient manner. And so, you see the chronic absenteeism goes from thirty-five point five percent down to twenty-one point nine percent right now. We hope that it stays that way. But again, the difference in this data is, is that we're capturing essentially the first two weeks of school versus in the previous years. Those years capture a full school week. And so, those numbers could potentially change over the year, while we know that the effort will continue, and we will continuously improve based on the feedback from our families, the data that we see, the attendance trends, of what our students and families tell us. We'll change our strategies to ensure, or hopefully ensure, that our attendance stays the same as it is or improves throughout the school year.
So, when we, so my question is, another question is the, when we have targeted intervention, when we identify an attendance from a crisis, before we get into the chronic absences, and like, before we get to that point, are we progress monitoring, are we setting it up? I know the supervisors of attendance are very, they're very, they're on top of this, and they, I wish, you know, that is a very, they do a lot with less, they do a lot. And the welcome, everyone, it's a robust process, but the progress monitoring piece, is it, I don't see, I guess, how do we, are we quantifying those interventions? Are we, and how are we going to capture that data throughout the mid, I guess, there's like quarters, right? I guess, when you identify your student who or family that we're trying to increase attendance, I don't see that, and to, I don't see, for me, it's like, there's major successes that are not in the data, that we're not capturing.
So, you're talking about the qualitative aspects of what I'm...
Qualitative and quantitative, both.
Quantitative is what I'm presenting today, was just like the peer numbers.
Okay.
What my team owns in the data assessment and accountability. And Julie team, the attendance team that you're talking about, and the welcome center, that is a team that goes out into the families and the communities and does those things. But as far as your question about how are we capturing those interventions? And so, our system, Open Architects that we have in music, we're more quantitative, of like, what are the numbers safe, or sex with attendance, discipline, all of those different things. We've actually adopted it as well, as we're shifting into MTSS, which we heard Deputy Cohen talk about in the last school committee, I'm sorry, school committee meeting. And we will be able to progress monitor and track those interventions in the system and have early warning interventions where we understand, before the student hits the seven-day mark, or whatever numbers that we put in there, what type of intervention would be most effective for those students. We're able to see notes, not just the numbers, to your point. At different levels, you'll have different access levels, but understanding what types of interventions, what do those communications look like with those families? Or what are the other interventions that the student might be good seeing? In addition to attendance and academics, because we think about the whole child as well. And so, Open Architects will be able to, will currently allow us to do that.
Now, my next question is, one more question, sorry. So, the supervisors of attendance, have they been able to be invited to the, I guess, the internal leadership teams to discuss like the data work that you guys are doing? I feel like, are there, are we, I guess, they're, I feel like they are the experts. They're always, like, they're dealing with a lot of really serious matters. Are we utilizing our supervisors and attendants to provide, I guess, the qualitative part that you're talking about? Because that is going to allow us to have a little bit more accuracy within the data set that you're presenting, right?
Yes, and so, that's one of the wonderful things about this system, Open Architects.
Open Architect.
I just ordered to give you data. You don't have to wait on deputy...
Open Architect.
...student, anybody in the district, a teacher, a district-level person can access it at any time. It's updated daily, every night. And even for, I've built some practical activities as well. And how do you use this data? And these are not just templated things of me going through the dashboard myself and partnering with school leaders, like Julie when she was in that role, or even partnering with teachers and CITs and staff, of how would you need this information and application? So, it's one way of what I think that you, what I heard you saying. Because I'm presenting the data here today, but I'm also having those conversations. I was at English earlier this week, where I shared them a worksheet of how they can look at their science data in a reflective way so the teachers can improve their instruction. So, at the same time, there's also things on the qualitative side of how do we work through and use this data? We have conversations and collaboration with attendance. We have conversations and collaboration with compliance. We have conversations and collaboration with each other. We are a team. And so, I think that's what you might be looking for, is everybody has access to this data in the district.
I was also kind of reaching for the MTSS piece, where I know there was the teams, excuse me, what is the acronym?
It was CAD.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of leaning towards in terms of just ensuring that the attendance team is part of that process. Because if I think about chronic absenteeism, that could be a topic, or whenever you guys meet to huddle, I think they play a very strong position on what they're seeing.
We spoke a little bit about it before, the attendance meetings that the schools have, they're part of. And then Julie and I have been partnering around looking, working with the attendance officers as well at the district level. But it sounds like Dr. Shorter had to respond.
Yes, and so, the intended, when designing my collaborative action meeting, was intended so that we remove silos. And so, while those conversations might work well, there's more power when you're having conversations and collaboration with each other. And so, in understanding, to your point, that a tenant's person might be in the meeting with the academic team. And so, thinking about hearing of what's happening with the student.
It's a attendance leader, or supervisor, not a person, sorry. No disrespect, but I just feel like it's not, the attendance leader, like, there are supervisors of attendance.
Supervisors of attendance, or different roles. And so, that's why I refer to it as a person, as opposed to a specific role, because it could be different roles within the team, which could be a person at a school or a district level, which there are a variety of positions. And so, I did use a general term, not many that way. But that that team would come together, and so, there might be an understanding of like, oh, this student isn't engaged, and so, there might be a different set of strategies that the attendance team uses in collaboration with cell, if they're all in the conversation together, as opposed to academics over here having a conversation without the academics and cell, I'm sorry, the attendance team or the cell team. And so, that we're looking at the whole child, and what's the strategy that's going to move everything and the best, for the best outcomes of the student.
Member Pena.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Real detail. Do we have any data on Ls who are affected by, because there's other things that are affecting, you know, the absentees, and we have a lot of unforeseen, you know, immigration laws that are, you know, chasing families away, and I reach, I get, you know, a lot of families reach out to me, and they're afraid to send their kids, they're leaving out of state. Do we have any data on what families are affected, like, or amount of families that are affected by that? Because some of the children are American, but, you know, some parents are not, and they're afraid. They're afraid to go out, go to school, afraid to go to work. They leave, they, you know, do we have any data on that?
Some we do, if you want more specific information, or if you have to share back out, uh, scattered as well, it's the specific numbers, maybe for two specific schools.
I just wanted to add, Member Pena, that, to provide communication and mitigate some of that misinformation as well in terms of, you know, how do we keep our students safe in our schools?
Yes.
I've been working with Yvette Martinez, and we've been going, we went last Wednesday and last evening to meetings at some of our faith-based organizations. um, to meetings at some of our faith-based organizations so that I, and I've directly communicated with parents, what our process is um, in terms of what do principals have to do, what does staff have to do and the step-by-step, um, safe schools procedures that we've released to ensure the safety of all students. And it's an opportunity for them to also ask, um, questions, right, about what, you know, what concerns them? Um, who do they contact and, you know, what should they, what should they do? Last night in particular, it was also a part of, uh, know your rights for some of our community members. And so I I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be able to go and do that in Spanish. Um, you know, in the evenings when parents are accessed, you know, able to access that information versus, um, just doing a webinar or, you know, so sort of a more impersonal, um, method of communication.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Thank you for that.
I just want to add that I think it's a really important point. Um, you know, we, we, uh, want to use the data to make decisions. Uh, we also are dealing with the data we have and by design, we don't have data on the people's immigration status. Um, so a lot, so a lot of, I think, uh, analysis is 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 sort of, um, uh, are hypothesis-driven, I would say. Um, the enrollment numbers that we saw earlier, I, and and, you know, the administrative team, Dr. Alvarez and everyone, uh, please feel free to weigh in. But I, but I think the enrollment data we saw earlier would would suggest an impact, right, from the immigration enforcement?
Yes.
And, uh, we certainly saw that, or seeing that in other districts that are certainly have a high, uh, number of of immigrant population. You know, particularly, I think Chelsea was a, was a particularly, um, uh, clear example of that. It almost to the extent that, uh, given the percentage of Ls that we have, in particular newcomer Ls, you might have thought it would have been even higher, the impact here. Um, but this is, this is why it's so hard to 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 be able to say exactly what's going on because you also have folks that are moving into the city.
Yes.
That are, that are for, for whatever reason. Um, and, uh, you know, I think because we saw the the decreases that we did at the high school contrasted with the increases that we saw at the high school in the years leading up to it, I think it's fair to say that that is probably what, some of what we're seeing. We're also seeing the intentional intervention of the, of the district to be adding secondary seats in in other places. And so like we saw the impact that, like, we had a clear goal over the last few years to reduce overcrowding at English and classical. And that's being accomplished in part by adding these programs that that we're in, which is, you know, I think, I think really exciting. On the, um, attendance front, I, I know that that is such an important conversation and we have people doing such amazing work to get those numbers as high as we can. And and that's also such a critical message that that we all need to be working together to get out that, uh, because people are are afraid right now. And the school is probably the safest place for your, that your kid can be in.
To my point, you know, that's why I want to have this conversation was, you know.
Right.
Do we have any data on that? We need to share the information that we protect our schools and our students.
Right. So so the, so the message is that the school is the the safest place for your, that your kid can be in during the day. Um, we have very strong, uh, policy on, on, you know, how our district interacts with in immigration enforcement and that you need, you would need to have a signed warrant. And that's something that the school committee has set out and affirmed, something that Dr. Alvarez and the LPS team, um, working in partnership with the Lynn Teachers Union has, uh, made sure that folks are are trained on and understand, um, to to prepare for those scenarios. And I think, um, what what we have seen and we've tried to communicate as a city is that we've been told by immigration enforcement that they are, um, not targeting schools despite the uncertainty that's kind of been delivery deliberately created in Washington about the, um, reversal of the so, the, the, um, protected spaces. Um, and that, and that has borne out, like we, we, despite the fact that we have had incidents near schools and the impact that we've, that we've seen that have, um, we have not had immigration instances inside school buildings and and that hasn't happened anywhere in the Commonwealth that that I'm aware of. Um, and so, you know, I think that's, that's something that we can all, uh, carry forward and and remind folks when we're asked. And, you know, I I think that's encouraging that the the first two weeks that we're seeing that kind of attendance. And thi- this is another limitation of the data. There's like counterfactuals, like what if we weren't dealing with some of these immigration fears? Maybe the, and all the interventions that we're doing would be receiving even even more results. And and so, um, you know, I I appreciate the the question there, um, Member Pena and, um, you know, everyone's work on this, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on attendance or Brikai?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shorter. All right. Next, we have a request to accept a donation from Andrea O'Donnell of Two Trumpets to the music department for the music department. What's the recommendation?
The recommendation is to accept the donation from Andrea O'Donnell of the Two Trumpets to the music department.
Still move.
Second.
Aye.
Post. Nice habit. Next, we need to make an appointment to the North Shore Education Consortium for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. So will the committee? Their motion?
Motion to appoint Dr. Alvarez to the North Shore Education Consortium Board Member twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Call call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Uh, next, we have a proclamation that you should have in your packet. This was brought to us by the, um, by Member Castellanos. Timely discussion, given what we're just talking about. Um, I think if there's any discussion, I think Member Castellanos would be happy to answer questions and otherwise to read to proclamations. Questions? Okay.
First of all, I want to thank, um, everyone, um, for the discussion tonight on attendance. Uh, it's very important work. Um, as you know, it's, um, very critical, um, work that is being done to bring, uh, chronic absenteeism to their knees. It's a, it's a, it's a countrywide issue. It's a chronic issue. It's, it's really a crisis. Um, and there have been many firsthand experiences throughout my years as a school committee member and also personally as a student myself at Lynn English High School who's struggled with attendance. Um, and what really made a difference was the level of engagement that I received through the Lynn, Lynn English, uh, faculty and the staff and the, it's my village that really helped me, um, carry me throughout to graduation. And it was really important to, to make sure that the stories like myself, a lot of kids don't really make it. So I take it really serious about, um, getting kids, um, excited to be in school, um, to help, uh, foster that with their families and engage in a way that we're going to build out, um, hope and making sure that we get kids to school, at least get them through the doors. Um, there's so many different barriers and circumstances and root issues that lead to kids to not go to school. Um, and I want to thank the SEL Department, the Attendance Department, Attendance Department, the Welcome Center. It takes a really robust, um, operation to to achieve that. Um, and I I like to request that we create an attendance awareness proclamation. Um, I wrote one up. It's in the packets for Lynn Public Schools. Uh, this proclamation would highlight our district's commitment to ensuring every student is present, engaged, and ready to learn each day. So I've drafted that statement to get us going. Uh, we know that consistent attendance is directly tied to student success. While chronic absenteeism can have lasting impacts on academic achievement, social, emotional growth, and long-term opportunities. By lifting up the importance of attendance, we can emphasize the role our schools, families, and community play in helping students build the positive habits that lead to lifelong success. I believe it's essential to work together to ensure every child has the support they need to be in school, learning, and thriving each day. And I look forward to collaborating on this initiative and I welcome everyone's thoughts. You know, that's very, you know, I I really, I really would like to hear from folks and see, um, how you feel about this because it really is important.
Member Gailey, Member Pena.
I would like you to read it out loud.
Oh, of course.
So everybody, you know, in the audience can hear it. It is very important, Ryan. I, Member Castellanos, and I agree with you on this. And I just want everybody to hear it. You did a great job.
Any questions and comments before I read? Mayor, did you want to?
I was just going to make a motion to.
So I'll read it.
Go ahead.
And it's not a long-winded one, I promise. I did, um, try to keep it short and brief and and effective. So whereas education is the foundation for success, it's school, career, and life. And consistent attendance is critical for student achievement. And whereas strong attendance supports academic growth, positive habits, and lifelong opportunities for every child in Lynn Public Schools. And whereas when students are present, engaged, and ready to learn each day, they are better prepared to thrive both in in and beyond the classroom. And whereas families, educators, and the community all play an essential, essential role in encouraging regular school attendance and creating supportive environments where students can succeed. And now, therefore, the Lynn School Committee does hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Attendance Awareness Month in Lynn Public Schools and calls upon our students, families, educators, and community partners to work together to build a culture of attendance and ensure that every student is present, engaged, and ready to learn. That stuff.
Thank you. Good job. So I.
Motion to accept.
So I'll take second.
Set second.
Call call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you, Member Castellanos. Next, we have the superintendent evaluation. Uh, so I'm just gonna, uh, talk a minute about the process and where we are and then turn it over to Dr. Alvarez. Um, so the, the school committee and Dr. Alvarez, I think, uh, we, uh, have done a great job staying on track. There's a lot that goes into these evaluations and we've, uh, you know, been consistently setting goals and evaluating, which is terrific. Uh, I think it's, uh, a very important function of the school committee, a very important step for the district. Uh, and we are using the DESI Evaluation Guide. Um, so you received the documents and information that Dr. Alvarez had, uh, submitted, uh, and she's presenting this evening. And that's the information that you'll need to evaluate, uh, the superintendent, um, by October third. So so you have the information, that's what you're using. And then, um, the, the, those evaluations are are due to be submitted on October third against, the, what you're evaluating against is the, or in in comparison to is the goals that, um, we approved previously. Uh, and the, there's a rating system of exceeded, met, significant progress, some progress or did not meet. And then the indicators that we chose, um, that are aligned with the four standards that exist under the DESI process of instructional leadership, management operations, family community engagement, and professional culture. And those are rated unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Um, so those are the ratings. And then obviously, there's a narrative that accompanies the ratings. Those are, uh, due to be submitted October third. And then what I will do is combine those evaluations together and we'll share it out on October ninth, or so our next meeting. Um, at that same meeting on October ninth, uh, which, this is what we did last year as well, the, Dr. Alvarez will set new goals for the, for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year and will select, uh, the indicators that we're going to use to, for the next time to stay on the cycle. Um, these are, this is a public process, so these are, these are public documents. Um, and so, you know, I will put them all together, but but, you know, what everyone submits is 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 public. And so folks should know that. Um, any questions about the process or any questions from me before I turn it over to Dr. Alvarez to present her, uh, evidence?
I just want to let them know that the manila envelopes they have have all the documents in that. So if you were looking for that, that's where they are.
Great, great. Thank you, Mary. All right. Any other questions? Dr. Alvarez.
Thank you. So I will start with, um, the district improvement goals. In your packets, you should have two sets of documents. And the first goal, uh, for district improvement was to foster multilingual learners literacy proficiency for lifelong success. The measure of success was the WIDA access. And our baseline was thirty-two percent. The target was thirty-four point seven percent. Our actual was forty-one and the change was eight point nine percent. For goal two, it was promote inclusion and support equitable practices for students with disabilities and individual education plan compliance. And we measured IEP compliance, um, actually over the two years. And we started with a baseline of sixty-seven percent in twenty-two, twenty-three. I came to the district in twenty-three, twenty-four. The I, IEP compliance rate then went to ninety-three percent, which was a change of twenty-six percent, um, from the baseline. And in twenty-four, twenty-five was eighty-seven percent, which was a change of twenty percent from the baseline. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read every single portion of this. Um, so goal three. Build inclusive communities, fostering belonging for educators and students. The district used a school belonging survey. And our goal was to improve three percent from the district baseline. We were at seventy-two point eight percent. Our target was seventy-five point eight. And our actual was seventy-three point four, which was point six of a percent change. Then we also had by June twenty twenty-five, uh, we were just talking about chronic absenteeism. And the target was from thirty-one percent to twenty-six point nine percent for all students. Our baseline was thirty-one percent. Again, the target was twenty-six point nine. The actual was twenty-two point eight. And so the change was a decrease of two point one percent. On the next page, page three, you'll see some graphs on just our, our actual screenshots of, um, the data that supports the statements. Goal four was to integrate mathematics and literacy skills for global engagement and success. And so these were our, um, MCAS student growth percentiles, which would increase from forty-eight point four to fifty-two point seven or higher in ten, uh, grade ten ELA. And the change was one point nine percent positive. When we went to, um, the next page on page four, and you'll see a data, uh, screen there from Open Architects as well. And under number two, there was, uh, the same goal except for math. It was, the baseline was forty-six point two. Our target was forty-nine point two. And our actual was forty-nine point five percent, so a positive change of three point three. And on page five, you'll see another screenshot from Open Architects. For goal five, it was advanced equitable access to advanced coursework. And we used a number of different, um, measures here. The baseline for PSAT was thirty-nine point six. The target was forty-one point six. The actual was fifty-four point eight, so our change was fifteen point two percent positive. For advanced placement, the baseline was two point eight percent. Our target was four point eight. And the actual ended up being seven point nine. That was a positive change of five point one percent. For dual enrollment and early college access, our baseline was ten point seven percent, meaning that many students were enrolled in these programs. Our target was twelve point seven and our actual was thirteen point eight, meaning a change of positive three point one percent. And underneath there, you have just some bullets, um, of the numbers that we looked at for FDC A, advanced placement overall, and PSAT. And there is a graph from College Board, um, that demonstrates, um, And there is a graph from College Board that demonstrates the administration of PSAT assessments in '23, before I began as superintendent. '24, where you'll see the green because PSAT assessments were not being administered regularly to students at the high schools. And in '25, where that continued and what the numbers look like. Any questions up to there?
Member Gailey, Member Castellanos?
So when we say the baseline and the targets for PSAT?
Yes.
Those are just the numbers taken the test? That's not any results of test?
No, we, so a PSAT is a practice SAT. So the idea behind a PSAT is to ensure that students have access to take it in order to practice for the real SAT. And they just weren't being administered, nor were students receiving accommodations for the PSAT. So we changed that and we started providing access to ninth, 10th, and 11th graders to be able to sit and take the test.
And the same with the advanced placement?
So advanced placement, the increase was not, is not only access in terms of students taking it, but also, remember, it's courses that we added through the program of studies because we've added a significant number of advanced placement courses. And I see you nodding because you're probably taking some of those now.
This is just people taking?
Yes, it's administration. And that was our goal because we had a void of courses that were competitive and we were not actually providing access to the PSAT as we should.
Member Castellanos?
Is there any way we could get some pre-pandemic cops? Because I know we have the '21, '22, '23. I don't know if there's, if, any of your, I don't see.
Pre-2021?
I guess pre-pandemic, which is.
We can.
Yeah, '29, yeah, so.
Yeah, we can certainly ask our partner at College Board. We can send, because they sent us this information at our request. What I do know is that the PSAT, we stopped administering it in 2019. So it had been a few years and I don't know how far back it goes, but I will certainly contact her and ask her for, you know, as many years as they have available so we can provide that.
Any of the domains that we could, I guess, a fair, just snapshot from a, actually, pre-pandemic, just to make sure it's, because there are a lot of different, obviously, challenges within those years that, you know, now.
Sure.
It's good to have that.
Goal six, which starts on page seven. So we, what we documented in goal six and the number of areas here, because there are multiple categories, were really turnaround strategies that we wanted to implement in order to mitigate the learning loss from COVID. And based on our eye-ready assessments as well, we noticed a trend in many of our secondary students where they were either two or three years below grade level. And so there were a number of strategies that we implemented in terms of strong instructional and operational leadership. And some of these cross over into the indicators that were selected by the committee. So I'm not gonna read through all of them, but there is a narrative here. And I do see on page seven, there seems to be either some Xerox issue here. Maybe, Mary, could we recopy page seven and provide that to all the members? Because it looks like, just like a technical error. Is yours fine? Oh, okay, mine isn't. So if everyone's is fine, then we don't need to do that. So there was a number, there were a number of things here. It was demonstrate strong instructional and operational leadership, implement a data-driven decision-making process for district systems. I can't read this one, but number three is promote the portrait of an LPS graduate by developing a culture of high expectations for students and staff. Four, I think is fine, is lead teacher cabinets and empower educators to lead and support turnaround strategies. Five is increase community involvement and partnerships to contribute to the district. Six was provide resource allocation through school-based budgeting. And seven was provide social emotional health support for all students. So those are all just narratives with some data points in them. And what I'd like to do now is turn over to the.
Did you forget eight?
Unless I don't see eight. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not highlighted. Thank you, Member Gailey. Eight was lead school design and innovation. And so the second packet has some information that's duplicated, but these were the standards that the committee selected in October. And so I aligned the evidence that we had into these to make it easier for you to look at the standard that you selected and then look at the evidence that we produced at the district level. And so the first one was instructional leadership. The indicator that was selected by the committee was curriculum. Demonstrates exemplary leadership in ensuring that all students have access to rigorous standards-based curriculum and programming. There are a number of bullets here that have evidence. I think most notably that we improved MCAS accountability ranking from 12th to 33rd in the state between '24 and '25, reflecting 175% increase in student growth and achievement. These links are still live and I know that we've provided them before. And then, you know, there are different things cited here, including expansion of seats at Bennett Street, at CASA, FTCA, making sure that we established equitable course placement policies to remove systemic barriers for students. The PSAT administrations, expanding AP courses, of course, now reaching 8% of all of our high school students, which is extremely important to us. And also increasing the students in early college and FTCA to 13.8%. On page two, it goes on to talk about the multilingual learner proficiency growth over five years. It's actually the highest it has been since, over the last five years, as well as some of the targeted supports that we provided. For the next standard, it was also instructional leadership. And it was 1B instruction. Ensures that instructional practices in all settings are grounded in evidence-based strategies, designed to engage all students, and differentiated to meet individual learning needs. And so I will run down these bullets sort of in summary form. Nearly tripled district's growth percentile ranking between '24 and '25. We improved district performance from fifth lowest to seventh from the bottom, signaling a positive academic momentum. We reduced the number of schools requiring state assistance from 14 in 2024 to 11, and then recently to eight. Increased progress towards targets, placing the district at the upper end of moderate progress and just one point away from substantial progress. We've also improved accountability ranking this past year in 17 of our schools and reduced the number of schools in the lowest 10% to eight in 2025. Created a centralized data team to support school improvement and strengthen educator data literacy using the Harvard DataWise Improvement Process. We've also, as you know, have been at the forefront of offering teachers project-based learning across classrooms using MLE instructional strategies since nearly half of our students are Ls. Using Flashlight 360 in secondary schools resulting in a 3% gain in student speaking, writing skills, and surpassing program expectations. We're also looking at student opportunities through targeted funding, including supporting HiSET and Sunday Phonics at different schools. This summer, we made a huge push for QTEL professional development for leaders. Advanced tool language programming, expanding to fifth grade at Harrington and grade three at Connery, with students successfully reaching WEDA attainment benchmarks. And a continued systematic revision of ELD curriculum maps to ensure explicit and consistent language instruction for multilingual learners pre-K through grade five for DESI compliance. Standard two, management and operations. Indicator two A was environment. Develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs. So we saw the video earlier, facilities, but really, aside from just the physical demonstration that we provided, we maximized use of district-owned facilities to reduce overcrowding and reliance on these spaces. We opened not only this building, FTCA. We rebranded one of our programs to Harold Durgan Success Academy, creation of CASA at Fecto Leary and the Early Childhood Center at Bennett Street. We've also realigned our central office operation to improve efficiency, service delivery, and cross-departmental collaboration. We've published the LPS Employee Staff Handbook in collaboration with teachers, leaders. And that, of course, is either, it's also an ongoing project for all of us. But we did not have a handbook two years ago when I started here at the district. We've also released since then a principal supplemental administrative procedures that just was given to all principals, I believe, early September. Detailed guidance on personnel investigations to ensure consistency across the district. Aligned and adopted key policies needed to manage school environments effectively. And so we have a number of substantive policies that Charlie Gallo took the lead on, but many of us participated in. And the district administrative procedures that came after that, which are so important to make, ensure that all schools are operating in a way that is calibrated. Standard two was management and operations. Indicator two B, human resource management and develop, development. Implement a cohesive and comprehensive system for hiring, induction, and development to improve staff effectiveness and student learning with a focus on equity and diversity. We have increased the percentage of racially and linguistically diverse teachers by 3% through targeted recruitment strategies. We hired 234 teachers in school year '24-25, including 47 of them were from diverse backgrounds. These are just some numbers from our HR team. By June 9th of 2025, we had employed 1,598 teachers, when 194 of those, 12.14%, identified as diverse. And that was an increase of 10.86% from the previous year, which is pretty high for a district our size. We reduced the teacher vacancies at school opening from 250 in this previous year to this opening. It was 100, we had 160 new teachers who are all very excited. And we also had an advanced district-wide human capital strategy for equitable hiring. We participated in many hiring fairs and career fairs that we had not participated in before. We also supported licensure development for teachers through special education, ESL internships, and those that were wavered to provide them with targeted supports. We streamlined HR practices for recruitment, onboarding, and professional development, including MTL prep, induction support, and monthly licensure meetings. And we provided bonuses to 14 teachers under a teacher diversity grant. Standard three was family and community engagement. Under family concerns, effectively responds to and resolves family and community concerns in a timely and equitable manner. We established a system where principals respond directly to high priority family concerns with support from deputy superintendents and the superintendent, ensuring alignment and timely resolution. We created a district family engagement liaison role to provide principals and support families in problem resolution. Ensured concerns are addressed efficiently and escalated when necessary and communicated respectfully in multiple languages. And page five, provided monthly communications to families highlighting district priorities, updates, and student celebrations. Responded to school committee requests within 24 to 48 hours of inquiry. And we strengthened school home communications and behavioral expectations. This is amazing, resulting in 41% reduction in expulsion hearings. There were 22 in '23 to '24. We were down to 13 last year. And the last standard was professional culture. Indicator four C, communications. Demonstrates strong interpersonal and communication skills across a variety of platforms and audiences. Communicated monthly with elementary and secondary teacher cabinet and the student cabinet for critical feedback to shape a positive student experience. Communicated with parents monthly through Parents Square for general school messages, district updates, and directly with all students in grade six through 12 through their student portals. Led the monthly principals' meetings to implement the LPS vision and district strategic plan initiatives. Contributed to monthly articles at the item to highlight school initiatives and student success. Communicated with stakeholders, including opposition to KIP Academy LIN expansion, advocating for equitable resources for all LPS students. Engaged parents directly at LPAC meetings, providing information and removing barriers for families whose first language is not English. Communicated with LTU and 1736 in a biweekly cadence, resulting in a decrease of contract violations and grievances. This past year, we had three grievances from local 1736 and one LTU grievance held in abeyance, which was early college. The previous year, '23-24, there were 14 grievances. And in '22-23, 13 grievances. And the breakdown is there for you. We also elevated teacher, student, and teacher accomplishments through consistent social media presence. Our meta-business data suite data shows, we currently have 13,193 Facebook followers, close to 2,000 Instagram followers, and our opening of school posts reached more than 12,000 people in the first week. Any questions on the second set of evidence?
Great, thank you so much for the presentation there, for explaining all of the evidence. And thank you to my colleagues for your forthcoming review and submission, October 3rd. If anyone has questions in the meantime, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself and Danie and of course, the superintendent, if you like. And then at the next meeting, we will present the evaluations and do the goals for the next year. Great, thank you. All right, next we have communications.
Thank you. So I was, the request was to provide communication on our elementary K5, K2 ELD minutes. And so I'll read through this and answer any questions afterwards. So since 2019, our ELD minutes in grades two, K to two, were scheduled in whole-class blocks that included both English learners and non-Ls. The model diluted the effectiveness of ELD instruction and raised compliance concerns as Ls are legally entitled to dedicated language development time with ESL-licensed educators. That same year, the district used interdisciplinary units as the vehicle for delivering ELD minutes. However, the IDUs did not meet required standards, were not consistently aligned to content, and failed to ensure instructional delivery minutes in every school as mandated by the Look Act, which is chapter 138 of the Act of 2017. As a result, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had identified corrective actions in the 2019 Tier Focus Monitoring Report leading to a corrective action plan that was issued on February 5th of 2021. There's a copy of that report in your folders. And we shared the presentation on this in detail last November in a presentation that shared all about how we were correcting those. And so what's changed this year is we have. And so what's changed this year is we have dedicated time for Ls. Our ELD minutes will only be delivered to English learners during the scheduled block. Non-Ls will no longer participate in ELD time. The current schedule during the 35-minute ELD block, ELD teachers will work with Ls on explicit language development, while non-Ls engage in meaningful reinforcement learning, either reading, writing, or math, with their SEI, meaning their general education teacher. The alignment with core curriculum is designated, the ELD-designated blocks are now aligned with caring school communities in kindergarten and MyView ELA in grades one and two, ensuring smoother integration with grade-level content. The, currently, the mapping is completed for the MyView units through unit four, which will take teachers through February of 2026. And the remainder of the mapping for unit five and six is expected, the expected completion time is February 2026. And so the last, what's changed in early literacy platforms is the grade two, K to two have transitioned from DIBELS to I Ready to align data analysis outcomes. Unlike DIBELS, I Ready provides built-in accommodations for Ls, such as audio support and translation tools, offering English learners more equitable access to assessments while giving educators more consistent, actionable data to inform instruction. The scheduling change allows for the structures necessary to ensure Ls receive the full legal required instructional minutes. Under the Look Act, it also provides Ls with the focused support they need while allowing non-Ls to continue learning in parallel, resulting in equitable use of instructional time, strong compliance with state requirements, and a more coherent instructional system across all of our elementary schools. The district has been notified that we will be under review for the Tiered Focus Monitoring in April of 2026.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Just a couple of questions. So under the current schedule bullet point, when were teachers made aware that this change would be happening?
So we started, so we started this process back in February. I met with all of our principals. They planned on how they would adjust, make the schedule adjustments, and were working with teachers. And I also worked with the teachers at the elementary cabinet that meet with me every month, who engaged in not only understanding, but giving us vital feedback and suggestions on how we could realign this to not only meet compliance, but to best serve the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, and then what is, so, I don't know, second grade classroom, what does this look like for their block? Where is, where is it happening? Where are the other students? What does this all kind of look like at the elementary level?
So
Like in practice?
In practice. So what I will share is, let me give you an example of what it looked like before and what it would look like now. So last year, for example, in an ELA block, which we would assume that everyone is receiving and is tier-one instruction, all students were in the ELA block, and the ELD teacher would also come in and provide ELD to all students.
Okay, so it would be like co-teaching?
Yes, except that for, so Ls are supposed to have the ELD teacher, right?
To themselves.
In a separate time. And I realize that perhaps this model was created for logistical reasons, lack of, right, minutes. We all would want, if we had our choice, our elementaries would have another 30, 45 minutes to the day, but they don't.
Students would love that.
Yeah, I'm sure the students would love that. But because of the way, because of the time constraints, I think there were decisions made in where everything was sort of happening at the same time. And that does not qualify, right, for actual ELD minutes for a student. So now, what's changed is that an ELD teacher only works with students that are Ls, and our general education teacher during that time would be working with students that are non-Ls.
Okay, thank you. So is that within the classroom?
Yes, that's within the classroom.
Lessons going on within the classroom, okay.
That's within the classroom. I wish we had space to
No, yeah, I understand.
Move out of those classrooms and do it separately, but we don't.
That's tricky, because, you know, you drop a pencil in the second-grade classroom, and they're gone for 10 minutes, so. That could be tricky. So I would love to, just kind of, it's true. I would love to just kind of get some, you know, an update, maybe in a month or two, how that's going. And just because that, that, my mind seems a bit tricky. While I appreciate that this does need to happen, and I do appreciate our space limitations. You know, in my mind, that's, that's a little bit tricky, so, yeah, so, thank you.
We'll certainly provide updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next, we have the Student Enrollment and Attendance Report, Julie?
Sure. So in your packet, you have a letter, and as you know, every school district in the Commonwealth is required to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education enrollment as of October 1st. So as dated in my letter, which was September 23rd, we had 16,005 students, but as Dr. Shorter just reported, that number now is 15,971. And comparatively speaking, last year, the district reported in 2024, 16,364 students. So we are down this year 393 students. And our attendance as of September 18th was 93.3, similar to what you saw in Dr. Shorter's presentation. Any questions on this for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I just jump into the superintendent's report, I do want to just share and acknowledge that we have with us Mr. Shingay Mutasa in the audience. I just want to welcome him. He is a doctoral fellow from the Harvard Graduate School of Education. He chose LIN to come dedicate and work and give up his time. He's a third-year student about to start his doctoral research. And he chose LIN because his values align very much with ours. And I just want to make sure that you feel welcome. LIN is a place that welcomes everyone. And I do want you to feel that you belong here with us for the year that you'll be doing some work for, for your graduate work. So thank you for picking us. The 25-26 school year has opened with great energy, optimism, and purpose across our public, LIN public schools. Students and staff returned to schools that were ready for learning, and our opening days were marked by smooth operations and a renewed sense of community. We captured many of these moments on social media, reflecting the joy of a strong start. I hope you all enjoyed our Facebook feed for that first week. We tried to keep it strong and give you a lot of, capture a lot of visual moments of what was happening in the schools. So each school environment is unique, yet all ensured that facilities, food services, staffing were aligned, so every child entered a welcoming and safe space on day one. Across the district, schools have demonstrated measurable improvement in key indicators, a reflection of the hard work of our educators, leaders, students, and families. These gains highlight our shared commitment to strengthening the instructional core and belonging, building coherence in practice. Few things lift staff morale more than seeing student achievement rise, and this year, we have much to celebrate. Our principals met this month to begin the cycle of data disaggregation, and together, we recognized many successes. According to DESI, the official reports will be released to the public, and actually, it's not Tuesday, September 30th. They said now Monday, September 29th. So Monday, we'll have lots of good news for you. As we await those results, we will continue to celebrate the progress of our schools while doubling our efforts to ensure every student reaches their highest potential. At the same time, the district-wide efforts to deliver structured early literacy supported by high-quality instructional materials and aligned pedagogy is already evident in classrooms, positioning our youngest learners for long-term success. We have also seen increased enrollment at FTCA, LIN Tech, CASA, and the Early Childhood Center at Bennett Street, reflecting the confidence families place in these programs. I hope you enjoyed the video showcasing these new spaces created by our team. Looking ahead, we are excited to begin planning the expansion of career technical education pathways at English and Classical, and we are equally eager to spread joy and excitement through a multi-year plan to add artificial intelligence learning spaces to our elementary schools. More updates will follow as we continue to develop these initiatives. We are also expanding opportunities for students across high schools. Early college and dual enrollment programs continue to grow, giving more students access to rigorous, credit-bearing coursework that places them on a clear pathway to post-secondary success. While construction at 195 Market will continue through August of 2026, we expect to open the third floor with additional student seats for FTCA in September of 2026. In late June, LIN Public Schools was honored as a PBL Champion District by PBL Works, a national recognition that underscores our commitment to project-based learning as a powerful approach for deeper engagement and student-centered instruction. Looking ahead, we are all committed to building on the momentum created through thoughtful program design in all of our new spaces. Our strategic plan, which runs through 2029, continues to guide our work through the pillars of equity, excellence, and community partnerships with measurable goals for student achievement, educator development, and operational effectiveness. This year, I will also continue engaging with parents through the city's faith network to strengthen communication and better understand the needs of our families and caregivers. This has been well-received, and it is in fact a reminder that there is nothing stronger than community. While there is still much work to do, the opening weeks of 25-26 have already demonstrated what is possible when a district moves forward in coherence. I am proud, optimistic, and excited to share that the future of LIN is brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, unless you know further business?
Motion to adjourn.
All fair?
Aye.